Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, that's probably different.
Definitely, definitely.
Are a lot of people in the office or is it kind of?
It depends.
Going from a.
Okay.
Depends, yeah. Some some days like you know, the past few days last week, there weren't a lot of people because of the end of the month and people were scrambling.
Hey, where's that helicopter?
I see all their people.
Where's the helicopter?
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
You're what?
Where's that helicopter?
You want us to what?
We can't. Sure. Put a flower in front of it. But I'll figure out how to do it. Hey, listen.
Stay a little bit.
My guy.
If you can, if you can take the snow out of the air before it hits the ground, right?
That's a good point.
And we can blow it back up.
Right.
We don't, we don't have to get it off the street.
Let's just blow it to another town.
There you go, that works too.
I like it. I like it, we need to look into that.
I'm open to suggestions. Yikes, I forgot to call my guys coming tomorrow morning.
You can use the mouse there loop if you want.
Oh. So used to, I'm looking at this and it's kind of, it's like my computer, so.
Okay, so I can hear you.
Right. Let me turn it down just a little bit. In case you get excited and super loud.
Start yelling.
No, I don't have much talking to do tonight as far as I can see.
Yeah, I don't think there's much to get excited about either, so hopefully we all need to go.
I expended my energy this week.
Yeah.
Well, see Brady has now made it official.
He has been.
Ah. We'll see.
But then never, but then.
That doesn't mean he can't take his line of all time. Well, somebody said, a clumpster said that he's working aside a contract with Patriots for one day, so that he could retire.
As a Patriot.
Yeah, as a Patriot, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. Is that what that subject was about with Robert Kraft, the first day that he said he might be retiring?
Oh, okay.
And Robert Kraft was like, I don't think so. I think it was a little bit of bad blood there, but well, not that so much bad blood, but just.
Yeah.
When we left.
He left, he left, he wasn't traded away or anything.
Right, yeah. He left on his own accord, yeah.
All right, well, we're all here, we'll get the meeting started, it is like two oh seven? Eighteen oh seven. One, three times. Uh, first things first, we'll take tenants, all the counselors who are currently on the board are present. Next, we'll look to approve or modify the agenda, does anyone have any modifications that they would like to make to the agenda? Just no?
Now, make a motion, we accept the agenda as printed?
All right, motion by Paul, have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, okay. And a second? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. All right, next, we're gonna look to approve the minutes of the January eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty regular council meeting, we also have the assessors minutes, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we've just gone on there, but we'll, I'll work those as well.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the assessors' meeting minutes of January eighteen, two thousand two two two.
I'm joking, that sounds weird. Yes.
As written.
Oops. Two too many, sorry.
One, that's many.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Peter. By hand, minutes of the assessors meeting, all those in favor?
I'll make a motion that we accept the town council meeting minutes of January eighteen, twenty twenty two, as written.
Motion by Peter. Have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Paul. The assessment. All right, all those in favor? Motion carries. All right, now we're going to item number four, old business. Buildings and properties being listed with the root of turn.
We got there.
Yep, so that's Edna's building, but we didn't get any bites on Craig's list on that building at all. And, um, so I reached out to Fields Realty, they're gonna list it, she's gonna list it, she's come up and looked at it, she's taken photos. Um, she was supposed to electronically send me the paperwork design today, but I haven't been able to right now, so it will be here till here tomorrow. So we'll get, get that in her hands and, uh, pick those out the door. Hopefully it will. She seemed to think that the building was in better shape than I said, certainly make it. She thought the foundation is solid and, and that it needed an inspection, that it would do an inspection.
I know we've set, uh, and I don't know what kind of price she's gonna set on it. If somebody does make us an offer, uh, the building does need work.
Yeah.
So at that time, I mean, I think it's a fair offer if somebody has a good, uh, plan for the building. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I don't wanna give it away, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna let it sit there too long either, anywhere it becomes, uh, you know.
I asked her to list it at the tax assessed value.
Yeah.
For now. And, uh, luckily we were open to offers, so if somebody was interested to approach.
And we'll make that call at that time, so I think it's a fair offer and it's a good, uh, good reason that we have, we should, we should absolutely compare a whole part.
But, yeah.
Awesome, any other buildings that we're listing?
Well, we have a couple in the think tank here, we're just waiting for, you know, we're waiting on a couple buildings to
Yeah.
follow through the process here, we're gonna post one, I plan to do that tomorrow. And then, uh, the other one is still being dealt with through label. Legislation, but Nancy, you're gonna address that, right? Dorn, Dorn, uh, Nancy will talk about that, I think, Dorn, manager, I think.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Okay.
Look, did you, did you wanna share about the Woodland property?
Yes, I'll try to, yeah, I, yeah, I do. So we also own a property, uh, the revolving loan ended up with a piece of property in Woodland. Um, that I asked Fields to go look at as well and to, uh, see if she had any ideas on what the value of it might be. It's twenty-five acres, it's near Woodland Consolidated School. I don't think we're gonna build this all shed down there. Um, probably ought to be looking apart with that. It belongs, it was granted to the revolving loan as part of a
Right, the history with that was is that the revolving loan had linked, uh, some right to the individual that formerly owned the Colonial before, uh,
Before Steve.
Before Steve Dogg.
Okay, okay.
Okay. And they, he defaulted on his loan. And he had a piece of, of real estate in Woodland along with this piece of property with the thirty-five, thirty acres, and it's basically not usable for any type of activity or building or farming or whatever. It's more a swampy type of piece of property.
Looks like four of it is usable and the other twenty-one are just.
Yeah, just not that great.
Swamp or whatever it's listed.
And so as a, as a result, that piece of property technically owns the revolving loan committee. And but it's up to, uh, the revolving loan committee to assign a town to go ahead and list it. And me being the chairman, I'm, you know, all for, let's move it, uh, get whatever we get for it, and, and we don't need to be in the real estate business.
That's all right.
But that's how that piece of property became, for pass, that's how that piece property became.
You know, looking back, we've obtained taxes on it to put it some time.
Yeah.
So, and, uh, just paid the tax bill on it.
So right now it's cautious.
Yeah.
So, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, for now, let's move it. Good. So, good, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Nancy, thanks for reminding me about that.
Yep.
All right, moving on to number five, new business, uh, item A. Uh, new Western Star truck update.
Right.
So just wanna update you guys, uh, on the Western Star that was approved at the annual town meeting last June. Uh, I got a phone call last Monday from the dealership saying that he will no longer be selling us the truck. Because Daigle and Holton, the dealership we bought it from, sold their dealership to Allegiance. This is a company out of Massachusetts, Vermont, dealing thirty-seven, thirty-eight other dealerships throughout the state of New Orleans states. So I'm kinda scratching my head a little bit, my God, we're ready for production, we're supposed to be in production in February, and now we can't get this truck. So I talked to the salesman a little bit, and he offered us a international, specia- of an international truck. As well. Give me the quote and we'll take it from there. So I kinda thought about it for a little bit, and I figured there's gotta be something, another avenue to build, so I contacted other Western Star dealerships. O'Connor GMC, uh, O'Connor trucks down in Augusta. Um, they weren't really interested in grabbing our truck and carrying it forward for us. Um, reached out to Freightliner Maine, pretty much the same scenario, which well, let me think about it and we'll get back to you. So I called, contacted HB Fairfield, which is our, uh, one of our reps, and I put a plow on the trucks, our box on the trucks. And I kinda picked his brain and he kinda referred me to Ryan Daigle, Ryan Daigle. He descended off of, uh, Daigle Holton, I don't know if it's Greg or Gary, I don't know if it's his son or whatever, anyways. He works for Valley Limited out of Hartman in Canada. He kinda knew that his parents were selling business, so he kinda moved away from handling business. And he signed a job for, uh, Valley Limited out of Hartman again. So I gave him a call and told him, hey, this is near where you're at. Our truck is supposed to be in production in February, and now everything just got dropped, and I really don't wanna start back at square one and wait another two more years before we get a plow truck. And, uh, so he, he talked a lot about his boss, and right now they're willing to grab the truck out of production for us, carry it forward, and sells the truck. And they agreed to sell the truck at the same price as what the quote we got from Daigle Holton, which is nice, very nice. Talked to him a little bit about warranty, because we're now dealing with a Canadian firm crossing trucks into Canada, what's gonna be the issue? Um, he kinda said, we've dealt with warranty work for Canadians before, and we should be able to have, these guys shouldn't have any issues bringing a truck to us or reserving for you guys or whatever, which is good. He also said they're building a new trailer facility up in St. Leonard. And, um, they're really committed, Western Star is really committed to providing services to us in the valley, specifically Fort Kent. There's a lot of logging trucks up there, and we talked about this before, ninety-nine percent of them are Western Stars. So Western Star is really committed to keeping warranty work serviced for the guys that own Western Star trucks. They're actually thinking about building facility up here somewheres. Just Valley Limited is thinking about buying a facility up here. Valley Limited also bought Freightliner of Maine just recently. So they're acquired all the dealerships throughout Maine, there's one in Holton, there's one in Westbrook and two other places, so. So it's kinda a lot of weight lifted off my shoulders, 'cause last Monday I was kinda, my God, we've been waiting so long. Uh, I was still waiting. I did get an update from Ryan Daigle today, kinda asking where our truck is in production, and he said they got pushed to the second quarter. So which means it's gonna be probably May to July before the truck is built. So we're a little bit delayed from February, but that lease is still there, and we're gonna move forward with it. So, kind of like I say, a lot of weight lifted off my shoulder from last Monday and Tuesday, which I was making phone calls left and right and trying to keep this going, so.
So Allegiance, what's gonna happen to Western Star, Daigle Holton out of Fort Kent, are they gonna turn it to international, is that what they're doing?
Strictly international.
Just international?
Because Allegiance is an international dealership, Western Star and international are competitors. Western Star, Daigle Holton, and Owen Herman, but the last dealership that had international and Western Star together. Just because they've been doing it for thirty-eight years, thirty-nine years. So this opportunity when Daigle Holton sold to Allegiance, it was the opportunity for Western Star to park ways and working with their competitor side by side. So they're no longer gonna be servicing Western Star or doing warranty work on Western Star, they're strictly gonna be, uh, international.
So when your truck is built, is it my understanding that it's going to be built in Canada now, or still built in the US?
No, it's still, still being built in North Carolina, I believe. It's still be an American truck.
But they will be the dealer?
Yeah, Valley will be the dealership that we're gonna be working under.
And you said they're out of Hart?
Hartman.
How far is that?
It's outside of Monticello, I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
It's near.
It's not too far from.
Yeah, it's not far from Central.
Yeah, so Hartman, they have another facility down in Frederickin. And again, they're building a new facility for trailers only here across in St. Leonard, so. I kinda put a bug in Ryan's ear, said, hey, listen, nice industrial park in Danbyern here.
Yeah, if you wanna build, build a facility.
Yeah. And I, and I did put a bug in his ear and said, hey, listen, we're.
Really, wouldn't that be nice?
It would be nice.
Yeah.
No, I did put a bug in his ear, say, hey, we have a facility here, industrial park here in, in Danbyern, and I'm sure the county will be willing to work with you guys if that's something you guys are interested in doing.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of trucks here in, Western Stars in the valley here.
Oh, it's unreal.
No, I know that, that's, when we, when we had our tanker built, uh, I, I was working in Holton at the time at the commercial truck facility. And it was five hundred trucks coming through there a day, and I was talking to each one of these truckers, and I was, you know, just me being the gift of gab. What do you guys think, we're looking to build a four thousand gallon tanker, what would you put?
Western Star.
Western Star. Western Star. Western Star. Western Star, I mean, Western Star speaks for itself, and I mean, they're a great truck. Our truck upstairs is a two thousand and three, it's almost twenty years old, the truck's been a tank.
What do you guys have for an engine that?
That is a four hundred and twenty-seven or four hundred and twenty-five horse Caterpillar.
Caterpillar.
But it's been governed down.
Right.
We governed it down to, uh, sixty-two and a half miles an hour, because with four thousand gallons of water, we were hitting eighty-five.
Yeah, wow.
So somebody was definitely gonna kill that house, so we, we governed it to sixty-two and a half miles.
Yeah.
Plenty of power.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, this new one is gonna have to run at fifty-horse, at a thousand RPM, so it'd be
Yeah.
one of the biggest engines we're gonna have in our fleet, 'cause we were running very small cats, pushy cats, I call them, they're around twenty, fifty horse. And Nick is here, can you say we struggle a lot, try to plow?
As far as your warranty work, as far as the border is concerned, and don't make me wrong, um, all you do is you stop on our side.
Right.
We fill out a form, you get your warranty work, you come back, there's no fee, there's no cost, there's no brokerage fee.
Yeah.
So you're, you're all set there, if that's any concern to.
Well, it was somewhat concerning, 'cause I didn't know the process of crossing the border, and I know.
Don't worry about it, non-issue.
With COVID.
And even right now with COVID, as long as you're doing it for business.
Yeah.
And you are, whoever's bringing it over is, is vaccinated.
Right.
You can do, you can do that all day long.
Yeah, like I say, Western Star is very committed to servicing us and then the valley, and it's not only municipality for me, just one missed out. Uh, Mellowus is looking at Ryan, brand new truck, Grandals, the same scenario, I mean, their guys are calling me last Tuesday, Wednesday, calling, hey, Rick, what are you guys doing? So, well, I said, right now, I really don't wanna go back to square one.
Right.
And have to have an annual town meeting, purchase international, whatever, whatever, and, uh, wait another year and a half, two years, I mean, we've been waiting long enough, it's gonna be over a year by the time we even get this truck, this truck can be ordered now, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's a long process, so, but like I say, they're very committed, West Star was very committed on helping us out, so. And like I say, Ryan Daigle's, we're very fortunate, Ryan Daigle stepped up to the plate and offered to get the truck at the same cost, and that was another concern I had too, so.
Especially with the way things are going up.
Right.
How fast they're going up.
Right, so, so. So that's where we are with the truck, uh, the other concern I wanna bring up, and I did give you guys, uh, some papers, so kinda just a basic fleet that I have. And these are the, the pieces of equipment that we run day in, day out. The first page is the, the loader, uh, that's a two thousand fifteen. Um, I'm really adamant, if I'm here another couple of years, I'm adamant of replacing that, that piece of equipment, 'cause we're gonna be at ten years old. Uh, it's still gonna have value another couple more years, and I think it's the wise of the council to look at trading it in, not wait till it's thirty years old, twenty-five years old.
So you're not getting anything for it.
Right, exactly. And like I say, that's our, that, one of our public works, and Nick is here to realize that we use that machine day in, day out.
Every day.
So before we started having issues with it, I think it's priority that we, we change that, uh.
How many hours on it now?
Four, five.
Five, five something.
Yeah. The other one's a tobacco, and again, now it's purchased through Wastewater. Um, so going back to that loader, that's the only piece of equipment that we have ever bought for the highway department. New, since I've been there. So I've always get this little thing, oh, Rick wants another truck, Rick buys this, Rick buys that, uh, that's the only one we've ever bought new. All the other pieces of equipment we ever bought, the old trucks, we bought them very cheaply, they're, we use them for our snow haulers, we pay nine to twelve thousand bucks for these trucks.
Yeah.
I mean, very, very, very cheap. Try to find a pickup truck or a car for ten thousand bucks.
Yeah.
That's where I'm, that's where I'm going at.
Yeah.
I say the tobacco is, uh, a new one, it's purchased by Wastewater just because of the funding issues towns had. Uh, the grader.
Does tobacco pay?
Yes.
Okay.
Wastewater paid for it.
Yeah.
The grader's a two thousand, we did do an engine replacement haul four years ago. Now?
Yeah, it's four years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and that's pushing Nick how many hours?
Yeah, not a problem.
We did the engine probably eight thousand. Roughly around nine to ten thousand hours on that. Not on the engine, but on the machine.
On the machine.
On the machine.
Right.
It's still the original transmission that I'm aware of, I can't find documentation that the transmission's ever been worked.
When did we buy that?
We bought that used back in two thousand and four, two thousand and three, two thousand and four.
Okay.
Um, and Nick is my grader operator, and he can tell you the grader's starting to get tired too. That's twenty-three years old now.
Yes, it, it doesn't, seems, never hasn't taken off, there, we come back and there's, there's issues we have to tinker with and whether it's blinkers not working, or it's, uh, leaks, or, um.
I kinda took it out of, of the working mode when I took over this position, because this grader was run pretty much every storm. So every time it was a snowstorm, this grader was going out, plow streets, plow roads, you know? And this machine, uh, per seventy-five gallons of diesel fuel in eight hours. So she sucks a lot of fuel. Uh, very expensive to run. So when I became public works director, I kinda talked to Dan McQuarney at the time, see if we can purchase a plow truck. So on the second page is that plow truck, the first red one. I bought that, why not a Vermont? Um, Nick and I actually went down to get it, I believe, or with Jason and I.
Jason.
Okay, Jason went down to take it up, I paid, I think, around fourteen thousand dollars on that truck. Again, it was a used truck from the county municipality. Since then, we actually put a stainless steel body in the back of that truck. So my thinking stainless steel is gonna last for a long, long time, the truck probably won't last another twenty years or whatever. So my mentality was, well, let's get a stainless steel box, I think Paul was on the council when we approved that. Uh, if we buy another truck, we're gonna buy a cap chassis. And move it.
That lost, right.
On the truck, so we're in the same.
What are we replacing with the new truck?
I like to replace the fourth one, the old four.
The old four?
Mm-hmm.
That's a truck I paid, I got out of Massachusetts, I paid nine grand for that truck, and we modified a lot of stuff on there. 'Cause Massachusetts does not get still like Danbyern, man. So, uh, we had to do some major modifications on that truck to get it going. Uh, the box in back, eventually rotted, we put a, uh, one of our stainless steel slide Swenson boxes on that truck to get us by a few more years. And we're, we're always trying to, uh, come up with ideas, trying to get us by, get us by, get us by. But the new Western Star I wanna purchase, you know, and now I'm kinda flipping back and forth between those two single lots of trucks, so the red one and the white one. First one and the second, I'm kinda flipping back and forth. That red one, uh, Saturday night, uh, Nick had the grader, I jumped into this machine, this truck, and plowing part of, uh, customer road, and I was just passing eight marquees, and the truck died on me in the middle of the road. At like one o'clock in the morning.
Died, is it?
It just turned off.
Engine shut off?
Engine shut off, and I lost everything. So I'm sitting in the dark.
And that's not the first time.
No.
'Cause it's happened to me as well.
Yeah, so I'm sitting in the dark, in the middle of a blizzard, I can't see fifty feet around me. Check, I can't get the truck started, I mean, has self-service, that little location. Uh, I really didn't wanna get out of the truck, but I'm here, I'm trying to figure out what's wrong with this truck, and trying to start praying to God that nobody behind me is gonna run into me.
Yeah, no lights or nothing.
No lights, truck just turned right off, so after about five, ten minutes, I finally got to running back and uh, went on my way and went back to the garage and kinda parked in the garage, 'cause I was getting kinda nervous with that, so. You know?
Yeah.
Uh.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, so we looked at it, had Alan look at it, it's electrical issue somewheres, but I don't see you guys, anything about electrical, you can chase that for
Forever.
Forever.
Something might be shaved on the frame, I mean, uh.
Take what I'm looking at from.
Yeah. Yeah.
Unless, unless, unless you replace it. Sounds like a relay that's kicking off.
I mean, Jason, we've had this issue before, Jason looked at, Alex looked at it, and.
Unless you replace the whole wiring harness?
Right.
You're probably not gonna figure out.
Yeah, unless, yeah, unless you rewire the whole truck, you're, you're probably not gonna find it.
Yes and no, it could be something really stupid.
It, it could be, it's defined it.
Right, that's it.
Could be something that's hit in the brain, that's shaved, and it just moves
Mark, so, yeah.
for a millimeter, it's good, and then you hit the right bump, and it, you know, and it could be anything.
But it's just, that's just one thing that issues this truck, um.
Fuel issues.
We have fuel issues, we have gas tank issues, we've had the wheel fall off, we've had, uh, a number of things go on with this truck, you know? So I'm looking at these two trucks, and I'm going back and forth, which one is, do we need to replace the most, and I I'm scratching my head here sometimes, I don't know what to do, and, uh, I'll go back down the list, the O nine and I think Pete and John, we were on the council, we had all those issues with the O nine, the Max Force engine.
That was the one that had the engine issues, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been better.
Yep.
Since we've taken care of the issue.
Yep.
But, you know, now, I'm not here tonight to say, hey, we need an all brand new fleet, but we really need to look seriously at the issues we have, we need to go, okay, this is two thousand and nine, the newest plow truck I had, the newest, you know? And it's, again, it's been better, but there's that issue in the past, wouldn't it?
What's, what's a lease on a plow truck though?
Uh, when we did the Western Star haul.
Yeah, it was, it was.
It's basically same price as.
It was basically the same price, the only fact was that again, the lease, we gave it back to them, and it was.
So a payment, a payment and a lease payment, you're not saving any money on where to go.
No, no. The only thing is that at the end of the lease.
You give the truck back.
Is that you take the truck and you give it back to whoever you're leasing it from, and you get into another truck, we have, we have maybe some equity built into it. And we get into another truck. Leasing the truck is entirely different than leasing the car.
Right, because it's a work.
Because it's a piece of work equipment.
Yeah, it's an equipment, yeah, it's not, not just a, that's a vehicle.
You know, I, I guess if we, if we were to look at it, uh, leasing a, a, a truck, then, you know, we got, there's a real deep this one do a real deep dive on, more so than we did the Western Star, but, you know, as far as, I don't know, I don't know. I, as far as the equipment on the front, I really would like to, you know, talk to Dear or Nor tracks or whoever, or Jordan Melvin or anybody that has a grader, well, leasing a grader.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a couple things. Um, with the mag, with the Maxedine, uh, I hope we alleviate that problem that we were having.
Yeah.
Without going into a real in-depth discussion.
Yeah.
How is that truck meant to be for you?
A lot better.
Okay.
A lot better. I'm not really concerned with the O nine.
So, we have a new plow truck coming.
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna have the Maxedine, you're gonna have the new one, you're gonna have two reliable trucks.
Yeah.
Here's my say on, on the one that's left over, whichever one you decide, um. And I'm trying to say this to be politically correct here. You're gonna probably have to live with one of these old trucks. Now, and please don't take this as a derogatory statement or anything like that, but I've seen the plow trucks go by on the side streets, and they're going pretty fast. Do we need to plow that fast? To me, the faster you go with a vehicle, especially a plow truck, the harder it's gonna be on the equipment. If you have an older truck, to me, and I'm not saying you guys are not taking care of your stuff, that's not what I'm saying, but I have witnessed it myself. Um, you guys work long hours, and I get it, and you're trying to keep up with the storm, and you're trying to plow. But the stuff does wear out.
Right.
And the harder you run it, the faster it's gonna wear out, I'm not saying you're beating on the truck, don't get me wrong. But with the new truck that's coming, with the Maxadine, whichever one you choose, whether it's the O four or the O three, you're gonna have to live with it for a bit. 'Cause you see the process of trying to buy another new truck, I don't think that's gonna go through anytime soon. And then we could go and say, well, uh, we'll look for another used truck, but are we looking at somebody else's problem?
Right.
You guys know these trucks.
Yeah.
So it's like us, I'm not saying us, it's like with any other department, you have your newer vehicles and you got your older vehicles, you know what I mean? The last one, we're gonna have to milk it, I'm gonna tell you right now, we're gonna have to milk it, we're getting a new truck, Maxadine. I think we're fir-, we're gonna be a lot further ahead than what we are now. Um, another core example is your street sweepers, those, those two machines we got, we got a screaming deal on one, and then you got, and then we let you buy the other one, and now you got them both running, right?
Street sweeper and sidewalk.
The uh, the sidewalk.
Oh, sidewalk, yeah.
Sidewalk tractor, sorry.
Those are a hundred fifty thousand dollar piece of machine, a lot of other communities purchase at a hundred fifty dollars, we pay ten dollars.
We got them for nothing.
We did, yeah.
And we're making them work.
Yeah, right.
So here's my philosophy.
My sidewalk speed.
On the leftover plow truck, we're gonna have to make it work.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I get it.
For now.
I get it.
Okay. Um, that's sort of just the way it is, I mean. Year, and I, I've said this before, year after year after year after year of pushing stuff back, pushing stuff back, pushing stuff back by prior administrations is biting us in the butt now.
Today, yes, okay.
So, save, save, cut, 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 cut. I argued, sitting in the argu-, in that, in that audience, how many times have I was blue in the face? That you can't do that, uh, we did it, they did it, here we are. You guys have done an unbelievable job as far as running with what you've got. Considering the times that we're living in right now, I think the council's been very proactive in getting you a lot of what you needed. Um, if I could whip out thirty million dollars and slap it on the table and get you guys a whole new fleet, I would do that in a heartbeat. But, I mean, you know where I'm going with this, right? The new truck's coming, we got the Maxadine running good, hopefully that will last. One of those two, we're gonna have to milk it, you know what I mean, we're not, we can't afford to buy you two brand new trucks, or we can't.
Not necessarily, just um, asking for another truck, I mean, you're talking, that's, this is like. Going to a fire beat with a truck that, oh, the pump works sometimes, but, oh, we'll make it work, you know what I mean? It's just, you can't rely on it. You, you can't just look at it like, well, um, you know, we'll, we'll make, we'll just make this truck work. Right now, because we can't replace it, well, yeah, um.